Okay, legislature's back. The legislature's back in order. We are in the second reading. Senator Adolfo Palacios, you recognize? Bill number sixty-five. Just to let you know the order we have right now on the agenda is Bill sixty-five, Bill thirty-two, Resolution sixty-eight, and Resolution eighty. This is the order that I see in the agenda. We are... So with that, we are in the second reading. And again, we are now in Bill sixty-five. Senator Adolfo Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're on the third reading now, right?
We're in the second reading.
Okay.
Motion to accept the substitute bill.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept Bill sixty-five as substituted by the committee on finance.
No objection, so ordered. Senator Palacios.
No, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill sixty-five on third reading for purposes of discussion.
So you may like to move to place Bill sixty-five as substituted by the committee on the third reading.
Yes.
Would you care to discuss?
Yes, I'd just like to give a brief... Let me just give a very brief background as to why Bill sixty-five came about. Actually, there are three items that Bill sixty-five proposes to address. Number one is the definition of close. Right now, this has to do with the ABC enforcement regulation. We know that bars and clubs close at 2:00 a.m. on weekdays and 4:00 a.m. on weekends and holidays. But the definition of close at this stance now is that the other doors are closed, but there are people remaining inside. This has been the encounter of ABC officers, and really, there's no violation for people remaining inside as long as the doors are closed. And of course, based on their training and their judgment, they suspect that perhaps there's still activity going on, but there's no enforcement there. Bill sixty-five proposes to provide a deeper meaning, a more definitive meaning of the word "close," and meaning that fifteen minutes after the authorized closure, which is 2:15, actually 2:00, but people can remain for the next fifteen minutes after closing time to consume whatever remaining, I guess, drink that they purchase at that point, but then to vacate, and this is where this bill proposes to do, is to mandate that that place be vacated except for employees remaining inside, for cleaning and for a manager to, I guess, supervise and put the place in order for the next order of business. And then the next... The current situation is that for any violation of that, they are only authorized to either shut it down for forty-eight hours for first violation, and then it graduated into, I think, longer hours. The shutting down... In lieu of the shutdown, Bill sixty-five proposes to, instead of shutting down where everybody loses, the business lose, the employee would have to take off for the next two days, you know, not employed, and then, of course, there's no revenue coming, that a monetary fine be levied on the business, and this is, of course, to be levied through citation by the ABC regulators. So instead of the shutdown, which, by the way, would be as a last resort and the fourth offense, would still be, you know, be... Can be executed. And the third item that Bill sixty-five proposes to do is that... The current provision is that there has to be a manager there, that at any time that a manager is not present during operation, that actually, operation should cease until such manager return from an event or for whatever reason. Bill sixty-five proposes to allow for a designated manager, at least one level down, in lieu of the manager, as a substitute for the moment, so that the business will not be closed down because that is not the requirement. So the three things that Bill sixty-five proposes to do is that it provides a deeper meaning of what "close," C-L-O-E-C, "close" means. It means vacated after the authorized hours of operation. And then, instead of shutting it down for forty-eight hours, they will levy a monetary fine, which would, by the way, the funds of which would go to the enforcement funds of the revenue and taxation. And then, of course, it provides for a designation for an alternate onsite manager during the hours of operation because those are the current requirements. So those are the difficulties now encountered by the ABC Board, and this is the recommendation of the ABC Board. Actually, this provision would have been included at a time when fees were, I think, were considered back in March, but because this had nothing to do specifically with fees other than the levying of fine, it was, I guess, inadvertently left out or not pursued, and that's why I picked it up with your office. And by the way, as a last comment is, the concerns of the legal counsel with respect to citing directly by the administrator, no, we corrected that and we gave it back to the citing authority and the mitigating authority, which is the ABC Board. So the ABC Board would mitigate, would consider any appeal, any challenge within ten days of citation. And this, I guess, would strengthen the, of course, the enforcement powers of the current statute. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I hope, you know, the committee would support this, I mean, rather the members. And by the way, there is no opposition in the testimony during the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Again, on Bill sixty-five, as substituted by committee, Senator Respecho?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Speaker, I don't oppose this bill. I rise in full support of it. But on page four, line three, where it says, "All funds generated as a result of the fines or penalties imposed herein shall be appropriated by Lester Tueng Guahan," this, to me, implies that it's an automatic appropriation. So my amendment will be then on line three, after the word "be," add in the word "subject to appropriation by he, Lester Tueng Guahan." Then the body can debate where that money should go, but the new sentence should read, "All funds generated as a result of the fines or penalties imposed herein shall be subjected to appropriation by Lester Tueng Guahan." And so it's not an automatic appropriation, and it's redirected to revenue tax for use by the ABC Board. And there's a... Maybe there's another amendment to direct those monies elsewhere, but my first concern is to make it subjected to appropriation by Lester Tueng Guahan, and I hope the author doesn't have any problems with this amendment.
Okay, let me just get this right. On page four, line four, you're to take out "appropriated," and then it will be now replaced with "herein shall be subject to appropriation by Lester Tueng Guahan." Okay, on the Respecho amendment, if there's no objection, so ordered. On the main bill, as substituted by the committee, Senator Wampat.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on that same page as well, is that I would like to offer an amendment on the same page, page four?
On page four.
Yes, and it's on line five, that there really isn't a specific fund per se for the Alcoholics Beverage Control Board. I would like to delete that, and half the fines or penalties go to the Better Public Service Fund, and that's within the Department of Revenue and Taxation.
I'm sorry, where would you put the...
Line five.
Line five.
Used by the Better Public Service Fund.
By the Better Public Service Fund. On the Wampat amendment, Senator Shimizu.
If the author of the amendment were you...
What is the question, Senator?
The question will be this. The Better Service...
Better Public Service Fund.
Better Public Service Fund. It's a special fund within the Department of Revenue, because I know in the last budget, you know, I know, like, you know, the Board of Accountancy, special funds of this, but I've not heard of where, during the last budget, I've not seen anywhere for a Better Public Service Fund.
Senator, would you care to yield to the question? Senator... Senator Wampat, would you yield?
As far as I know, is that, yes, it was in the last budget hearing, I mean, public budget bill, where that particular fund was... I mean, it wasn't created then, but it does exist, and this Better Public Service Fund is used by the Department of Revenue and Taxation to upgrade technology, to better serve the public, to provide additional training for their employees as well. So, and it's a fund that exists within the Department of Revenue Tax, and that's why we felt that, I felt at least, that it would be put to better use. There is no specific fund for the ABC Board at all, and the use of it, so it doesn't exist. So, and how they're going to use it, that hasn't even been established yet.
Okay, does that answer your question, Senator Shimizu?
Yes, it is. The other part of the question that I would have is, what are the sources of these funds within Revenue Tax? Percentage of the fee, well, maybe... So all fees that are levied by Department of Revenue and Taxation are put into this Better Public Service Fund. That also includes fines, because if I look at the author of the bill, this is really a fine that is imposed on the operator or the licensee for violations of the ABC laws and inspections, and each fine is a hundred dollars. So the amendment is saying that we put that into the fines now, it's not only fees, but also fines will go into that Public Service Funds. But it's... As I read the bill, it appears that the intent was to be given to the ABC Board, you know, Alcoholics Beverage Control Board, and that's not necessarily for the staff per se, it's up to that board how to decide, you know, where that's going to go. So if this amendment prevails, then it does not go anywhere to any fund dedicated to the ABC Board. It goes into like a general fund of Revenue Tax, and that will be used for general. Which leads me to another question. Who decides the expenditure of that Public Service Fund? Is it the legislature?
Again, would you like to refer the question to the author?
Yes. Yes.
Would you... Would you yield to the question by the Senator?
In other words, that Public Service Fund is not an automatic thing that goes to the Department. It still has to come back to... It still has to come back to the legislature for appropriation. So if the ABC Board wanted to use that funds, then it has to go through appropriation measure, and I'm not sure if that was the intent of the original author. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to get that clarified. Is that indeed, you know, the intent of the original bill? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Again, on the Wampat amendment, if there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. We are now on, again, the main bill, as substituted by the committee. Are there any other comments? Senator, would you like to close on it? If not, and there's no objection to the motion to place on third reading? So ordered. Senator Palacios? You recognize on Bill thirty-two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that Bill thirty-two be placed on... Be accepted and placed on the second reading.
On the third? Actually, it's not. There's no amendment to it, right?
No, no, it's...
So, motion to place into third reading.
So I'd like to make a motion to place Bill thirty-two on third reading for purposes of discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the motion, would you like to discuss the bill?
Yes, just a brief, again, a bit background. Bill thirty-two actually was at the request of the mayor of Talafau with several of the constituents recommending that the community/ youth center of the Talafau be named the... Jeremy Paul Newby Community Center in memory of the teenager from Talafau that tragically, I guess, made with tragic incident at Southern High, and there was unanimous support for this. Again, this is at the request, and of course, I support this, and there was a support from the, I guess, for the community with respect to just naming this, and I... That is the... And I hope the members of this body would support this bill. This is at the request of the mayor and some of the people of Talafau. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Palacios, on the motion to place Bill thirty-two EC into the third reading. Senator Shimizu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stand in support of Bill thirty-two to memorialize and rename the community center to Jeremy Paul Newby Community and Youth Center. I think it's right and proper. It came from the village, and if the good author, Senator Palacios, would not mind, I would like to be second co-sponsor.
If there's no objection?
Thank you very much.
So ordered. Okay, on Bill thirty-two, is there any... Does everybody have a copy of Bill thirty-two? Okay, on the motion to place Bill thirty-two EC on the third reading, if there's no other comments, no objection, so ordered. We are now in Resolution number sixty-eight. Resolution number sixty-eight, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to place Resolution sixty-eight on second reading file, Resolution as amended by the author, be accepted for second reading.
Okay, no objections, so ordered. Continue, Senator.
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Speaker, to place Bill sixty-eight, which is a substantive... Rather, Resolution sixty-eight, which is a substantive resolution for consideration by the body, be placed on third reading for purposes of discussion.
Okay, please, continue, Senator.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution sixty-eight was heard, in fact, two times, in the morning and in the evening, so that there can be greater participation, and in attendance were the three co-sponsors of the bill as amended. Essentially, the resolution is requesting the United States Government to recognize and extend the benefit of Medicare coverage to eligible, to Medicare-eligible, who receive medical services in the Philippines, notwithstanding that they are not referred there or that the emergency did not occur there. During testimony in public hearing offered by retired Congressman Robert Underwood, a U.S. citizen or recipient of the Medicare living, for example, in Canada or in Mexico, which is contiguous to the United States, should they need medical attention on an emergency basis occurring outside of the United States around that area, Medicare will apply. Here in Guam, I check with the public health and social services, and the only time that Medicare would apply for services rendered in the Philippines, two things must occur, and that is, the first is that the emergency has to occur here, and then there has to be a certification by a physician that the services cannot be rendered here. And so what are... What about those... The idea here is that we have people now who are eligible to receive Social Security and Medicare, who have decided to go back to the Philippines and remain there with their family after working with, I guess, with the United States Government, with Guam. They are entitled and they receive Social Security, but they cannot benefit on Medicare because they are there. And should they suffer, or should I be there, for example, just on a medical check, and then they discover that I need further treatment and added immediate treatment, that it would not apply. I have to come back here and be certified here and then go back, then you'll apply. So this is essentially saying that could be dispensed of that, and then if it occurs then it's an emergency, and if it would have been approved if it had been referred from Guam to there, then we're asking the United States Government if Medicare would apply under their circumstances. The emergency occurred in the Philippines. The Philippines is the next best place, I guess, from Guam. It's less expensive to go there, it's about half the price as compared by the airfare going to, I guess, to the mainland, to Hawaii, shoulder travel time. Everything is good about going there. I mean, the services, of course, would have to meet, and the facility has to meet the requirements of Medicare, and right now, we have JACCA-accredited facilities over there. St. Luke is one of the most popular, and we all go there. I mean, our speaker go there. And so there's no question as to the quality of service. It is just this administrative protocol that we have to iron out, and Resolution sixty-eight actually is requesting that, please, recognize this and extend the coverage of Medicare to Medicare-eligible who are in the Philippines receiving medical services. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On Resolution sixty-eight as amended by the author, Senator Shimizu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise in support of requesting. I think we need to try to use vehicles such as this resolution, very strongly worded, to really educate a system that is, quite frankly, archaic, you know? We're getting to a point in our era of technology that with the use of technology consultations between doctors anywhere in the world, specialists from all over the world that they can discuss. And on top of that, like the good author said, we here in Guam are probably very traveled. We travel Asia, we travel through the West, all the way up to the mainland. In the past, we have been able to seek healthcare in Hawaii and in the United States, California, Texas, and so forth. But, you know, also, times have changed. The cost of healthcare is getting to a point that it will really be only for those who can afford, for the rich and famous. Guam is blessed by being right in the middle of Asia and Pacific. Our neighbors are now moving in an era of bringing themselves up into the 21st century by being availing themselves to state-of-the-art technological diagnostic equipments. So when we do travel, and we all know that there are times when we do travel, we get sick, and in the course of getting sick, it is a crying shame that we can only be stabilized, only to be sent back to Guam because your Medicare will not be able to cover. Mr. Speaker, in the short period of time since I've returned to this august body, I have had visits by our most vulnerable groups, those that are up in ages, asking and are even, you know, giving up some of their health insurance, but they're Medicare-eligible, giving up some of their healthcare because they can't afford it and they depend on the Medicare. I'll need to find out now that if they go and they travel and something comes up, they won't be able to be covered by Medicare for a long term, but they'll take care of maybe immediate emergencies, but after that, and that emergency period is up, the funding source is cut. And I really honestly believe that we need to educate, because the system is reek with protectionists. They don't understand, you know, this part, and they probably only understand not only if it's a cost-saving measure, or it's something that will be able to improve the quality of care at an affordable rate, because we're closer to Asia-Pacific healthcare facilities. And it makes more sense. But however, if somebody from the United States, the continent of the United States, because we are part of the United States, do travel and are Medicare-eligible, and, God forbid, they have a catastrophic condition that was detected, I mean, we all know issues such as brain surgery, open-heart surgery, liver disorders, you know, this can be quite catastrophic, and probably more so when people who have chose to give up their health insurance because they can't afford, because they are on fixed income. And I applaud the good author that this resolution is being adopted, and I'd like to be the fourth co-sponsor if the author does not object to this.
And there is no objection?
No objection.
So ordered.
Thank you very much. And I want to commend them, but I think we should also, at some point in time, follow up with a letter with our own Congress lady to champion this resolution. We have her. She is our representative in the halls of Congress. She has very strong relationship with the Speaker, you know, and I hope that she will hear a little bit of my foundations in terms of being proactive and taking not only this resolution, but the resolution to come later, to take it and even introduce legislation. Because right now, all Americans are clamoring, you know, especially as a result of the movie Sicko. The system is sicko, and this is just one of this. And we are Americans out here with very unique and very, very, very unique healthcare needs that is probably far greater than most parts of the United States. So, Mr. Speaker, I want to applaud the good author, and I'm sure that this resolution will pass, and then also in it, we would just make sure that we ask our delegate to follow through and refer level of inference. I have no doubt that it will be able to make some impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu, on Resolution sixty-eight as amended by the author. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, first off, I want to thank the main sponsor of the resolution. Mr. Chair, first off, I want to thank the main sponsor of the resolution, the good Senator from Chalampago, for affording me the opportunity to co-author or to co-sponsor this resolution. You know, and one of the things, as you can see, my colleagues can take the time to look, there was nowhere in the committee report or the reports submitted by the good Senator from Chalampago that basically was against the resolution. And one of the things I see about this resolution, it helps to correct a common negligence by a far-removed body who thinks that the borders of our great nation, you know, are just within Canada and Mexico. This is something that just earlier today, we have to deal with with regards to another resolution that I'm sure that we're going to be, we're going to hear later on tonight. But this is something that we continuously have to do. We have to educate the learned, the educated individuals that I guess we and our great nation have to rely on to dictate to us how policies and laws should apply to us out here in our small little island, far removed from the continental United States. And, you know, albeit that is occurring, this is a long time coming for those individuals that rely on this healthcare system. If this kind of benefit is allowed, you know, for other citizens that live in the continental United, that can afford, that, you know, that choose to live in the United States, can be afforded if they go across the border into another area, maybe it's about high time they recognize our borders too as well. And this resolution is but one of, I would say, many mechanisms that we would have to continue to provide to those members in the halls of Congress, 10,000 miles away, to please recognize that we have loyal, patriotic, committed citizens that live out here, that have served to protect the democracy and the freedom that we enjoy today. And that something as simple as this is but a small gesture. I don't think it's going to hurt anybody. You know, if this resolution were actually considered and they actually did take this into account and did pass this as a result of this resolution, it's not going to hurt anybody, but it's going to help a whole lot. So with that, Mr. Chair, I stand in full support of this. And I humbly ask and request my colleagues to do likewise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Blas. On Resolution 68 as amended by the author, Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I too rise in full support of this resolution. And I want to commend the author for bringing this kind of medical Medicare benefit to have that extended to be used for those individuals who require treatment in Manila. As we all know, that Medicare is available for some of the Medicare, for all of the Medicare benefits, rather, provided it's emergent care. And this is one of the discussions that came up when I attended the trip to Manila, where I went with the mayors on my own to try to support them. And this was one of the issues that they fought really hard. The folks we met with at St. Luke's certainly said that it'll be a win-win, even for the United States government, because the cost of medical care in the Philippines is much cheaper and the quality rivals any U.S. standards, what's contained in the committee report. I want to commend Senator Palacios particularly for having not only a good resolution, but also having a committee report attached to this resolution. And then going through it, there was one individual who testified, Mr. Pat Duque. He expressed concerns that on page two, including the words Guam residents and U.S. citizens, he feels that some Medicare recipients are non-U.S. citizens and believes that this language may discriminate against those who are non-U.S. citizens. So his recommendation, I spoke with the author about this, this is page two, line 17, should rather read Guam residents or U.S. Medicare members who are eligible Medicare beneficiaries. Because we all know, Mr. Speaker, that you do not have to be a U.S. citizen to be able to be eligible for Medicare, provided you either have the 40 quarters or you can afford the monthly premium. So my first amendment is to delete the words "and U.S. citizens" and to replace it with "or U.S. Medicare members." So it's more encompassing.
Okay, and if there's no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The other suggestion that this individual made is to keep, if you kept the phrase also on that same page, "in compliance with Medicare program requirements", he suggested it be deleted because keeping it in the resolution believes will complicate matters in what this resolution hopes to achieve. So on line 19 and 20, it should just read, "and healthcare services and medical hospitals and facilities of their choice", semicolon, particularly to include medical facilities in the Philippines. So to delete the words "in compliance with Medicare program requirements", I don't see it as objectionable. I hope the members of the legislature feel the same.
Okay, on the amendment to delete "in compliance with Medicare program requirements", is no objection?
Because that's already implied.
So ordered.
They have to, yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Luhon?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the good Senator from Chalampago, Senator Palacios, for introducing this resolution. Mr. Speaker, this resolution will go a long ways to be able to help a lot of our Medicare-entitled patients here in Guam. I tell you what, Mr. Speaker, we have been, all of you, and I want to thank the body in 28th and continues now the 29th Guam Legislature. We know back in the 28th Guam Legislature, we worked diligently to try to get on board the air ambulance service. We finally got the plane here. It's going to be up and running or flying probably here with all certifications, we're hoping within the month. The nurses at G M H have had the opportunity to tour the plane. And why I say that, Mr. Speaker, is the fact that we worked really hard, diligent with the Social Security Administration, the overseer basically of the Medicare program. And we fought tooth and nail to be able to allow the medical, the JCO-accredited hospitals in the Philippines to accept Medicare patients. And as we know, again, based on Medicare coverage outside the United States, it's the closest reasonable JCO-accredited hospital, basically, outside the United States. Now, we fought tooth and nail to be able to have the hospitals that are accredited, to be able to take Medicare patients. The thing in dispute now, Mr. Speaker, is the fact that because of Alaska and Mexico's facilities being able to be utilized by patients from the United States, there is a cost difference. We know that patients can drive across the borders, border from California to Mexico, border from the United States to Canada. So their calculation, their fee calculation is based on those two countries. And when we say we have a unique situation here because they would allow us, but there's a cost difference because we can't just drive to Manila. We have to fly. It's an international flight. Although it's three hours, it's an international flight. So the discussion now is the fact that, yes, they would pick up the tab, but they're going to only pick up the tab that's relevant to either Mexico or Canada, equivalent. Not taken in mind, we know that they can also, they can fly, I mean, they can drive to Canada. They can drive, they can drive to Mexico. And a lot of times in emergency situations and the hospital is closer to Mexico, closer to Alaska, there's a lifeflight helicopter. Well, we can't take a helicopter either. So there's a dispute in that, there's a discussion in that. This resolution will go a long ways to help in that as well, that argument that we've put before the Social Security Administration, again, the overseer of the Medicare program. We've had obstacles after obstacles in regards to this whole scenario in our ambulance situation, Mr. Speaker. But we want, not only, again, for emergency situations, we know that medical costs in the Philippines is very reasonable. Very reasonable. And where a lot of our patients before could not afford medical care, now there is an affordable place that they can go to. Our insurance companies recognize that. And so with that, Mr. Speaker, one additional thing that the air ambulance has added to its fleet, basically, is that because of the traffic from the airport in Manila, they have contracted a helicopter ambulance service to be able for the patients that come from here, their trauma patients, once landed in Manila, will be now transferred from the airplane to a helicopter ambulance, directly landing at the hospital to alleviate that traffic. And we know, although the hospital may not be too far from the airport, it could be hours away in traffic. And so those are the things that we worked out. Again, I want to thank the good author of this resolution. This resolution not only recognizes that fact that reasonable healthcare that we know can be had in the Philippines on the JCO-accredited hospitals, it also goes a long ways, again, in our discussions and our back and forth to solving, again, the situation in the cost of to be able to provide the emergency service for the needed service, the long-awaited service we had for the air ambulance. And I want to again thank the author for this wonderful resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhon. Senator Palacios, care to close? Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Pangolinan, on Resolution number 68 as amended by the author.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I want to rise in support of this resolution. And I want to thank the author for allowing me to co-sponsor this resolution. You know, Mr. Speaker, I think that when we kind of think about healthcare and how it affects all of us, we are just at the cusp of the individuals that will benefit most from this. We are right there, we are just a few years away from joining them and having the same concerns about healthcare that they do and they face every single day. This resolution would allow access to JCO-accredited institutions. And I think that's important because it's one way of ensuring that you are going to get the kind of care that is comparable to what is given and expected to be given by mainland institutions. And that's very important because of the fact that the Medicare system also needs to get some assurances that when its members seek care elsewhere, that they are getting the quality of care. Just this past week, I was reading an article in Newsweek that compared surgeries for typical procedures that are typical nowadays, unfortunately, such as a heart bypass between Singapore, the United States. Philippines was not part of it, but I think Indonesia and India itself, and I think one European country. And a typical heart bypass, for example, costs about $100,000 in the United States, or $60,000. A typical heart bypass by the most modern hospital in Thailand, oh, Thailand was another place, cost about $20,000. Now, we're going to say, well, it really doesn't make a difference because Medicare pays for it. But Medicare has a copayment associated with that service, with all the services it provides. So it really makes a huge difference for somebody on fixed income with moderate, if not minimal inflation adjustment to their income, to face surgery, especially for those here on Guam, that can cost them $20,000, 10%, 20% copayment of that. So you're talking about, you know, $4,000 and facing 10%, 20% of $100,000 as a copayment. So it's $4,000 versus $20,000. It's really astronomical for somebody who's on fixed income, who's barely squeaking by because of their current earning ability. And so what this does is expands the universe of available healthcare to those that have the money can go elsewhere. Believe it or not, Mr. Speaker, people in the United States living there, those who have the money, go to Thailand. Those who can afford $70,000 for bariatric surgery or something for that effect, instead of having it in the United States, go to Thailand to get the procedure because they want to save money. And you're talking about people with six-digit income. It makes that much more sense to them. How much more sense does it make for somebody who's earning $20,000 a year? Or if you're a GovGuam retiree looking to a cola payment, you're earning $10,000 a year or $12,000 a year. And you're facing surgery that can cost your entire year's salary for a copayment. So I think that the people or the Congress, the administration within the Social Security Administration and Department of Health and Human Services know about these things. I mean, one of the biggest debates in the U.S. right over the last five years have been the cost of prescription drugs. And Congress has stepped up and said two things. We're going to allow individuals to buy prescription drugs from Canada. The same drug that is patented by a U.S. company and sold in the United States, shipped out to Canada, we're going to allow him to go buy it in Canada and bring it into the United States. Because in Canada, a one-month supply of Lipitor, for example, will cost you $15. A one-month supply of Lipitor in the United States will cost you $135 with a senior citizen discount. So healthcare has joined the global world with regards to knowing no borders anymore, no geographical borders. And I think insurance, which is the basic element of Medicare, should follow that model of no insurance, no borders, no geographical borders, that the only border it should have would be the quality of care that is available to you, whether it be in Thailand, the Philippines in our case, and so forth. The Business Week article I was referring to with Speaker is titled Medical Mecas. And hospitals around the world are drawing new patients with top-notch doctors, And hospitals around the world are drawing new patients with top-notch doctors, high-tech equipment, and low cost. And the, there are ten leaders in their field, Mr. Speaker. And it's a very, very interesting article. And having worked with healthcare, I've always been, uh, kind of following, um, you know, the, the healthcare developments in terms of not only the science of healthcare, but the financing of healthcare. And so I continue to do that. And I think that's, to me, what has really grabbed my interest in here. Because the financing of healthcare absolutely impacts the quality of life for our people. And there's no reason at all why we shouldn't be pleading this case with the Department of Health and Human Services. I am only hoping that we would not have to go as far as requiring congressional action, that with this resolution and our Congresswoman pleading our case in Washington, that we can actually make and impact the administrative mechanisms to have this change made. We know it can be done administratively. And we hope that they'll be responsive to the needs of elderly Americans wherever they may be living and giving them access to quality healthcare at a reasonable and affordable rate. And if this resolution gets heard in Washington and action results as a transmitter of this resolution, then we're not only helping our manumcos in Guam, but really, we will be helping all Americans on fixed income, opening doors and pu- pulling down barriers to quality healthcare at an affordable cost. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan, on Resolution Sixty-eight as amended by the author, Senator Tina Rose Muny Barnes.
Sidhose Mousi, Mr. Chair, and, Mr. Chair, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Resolution Sixty-eight. I'd like to, uh, congratulate the author, um, for introducing this resolution. And I, if there's no objections, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the author if I could also be included in, in this resolution.
There's no objection. It's ordered.
I, I thank you again and thank you, Mr. Speaker, as, as I look at how many years our community, our Congresswoman, who says she's been working on this since two thousand and three, our mayors who work closely with our medical society, uh, to work closely and bridge and network with our Pacific region, uh, neighbors, in, in, in hopes that the entitlements of Medicare can be extended to our U.S. citizens. I read in one of the resolutions that, uh, also inclusive on some of the limited reimbursements is the Tricare Ha- Health Plan, which is also a part of the Armed Forces Military Force, uh, Program, Medical and Dental Program. And I, I have to, um, believe that with that on hand and, and with that recognition, that, that, that working closely with our congressional delegate and her continued push, that, uh, the entitlements that our Medicare, um, um, how do you say, um, patients will be included. Because, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, it's important to know that, um, what is good for, for those who, um, represented the United States of America, the Filipino veterans and all that, uh, the, 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 those who, who reside in Guam or also Filipino descent and who qualify for that, they also should be entitled to this, and it's only fair. And if you can see that a, a health plan, a, a, a health insurance program that is supported and approved and, and, and operated by the military, then this gives me hopes that, 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 that our federal government can look into including all of us. And I, I really support this. And I said I was gonna keep it brief as I share all the sentiments with my colleagues. And I just know that hopefully, since we've been on this since two thousand and three, four years running, that we will soon have a very positive resolution from Congress and that this resolution and the efforts here will be accepted. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Tina Rose Muny Barnes. Uh, Senator Palashis, would you like to close? Okay, so on the motion to place Resolution Sixty-eight as amended by the author into third reading, if there's no objection, so moved, okay. Uh, we have the last of the Mohicans, Resolution Number Eighty, Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move Resolution Eighty down to third reading.
There's no objection. Would you like to clear, care to?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Resolution Eighty, uh, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, expresses the sentiments of the legislature with respect to the, uh, proposed federalization actions and, uh, being considered by the United States Congress with reference to certain, uh, governmental activities of the Commonwealth of Northern Marianas. There are two bills in the United States Congress presently under consideration. Uh, first is, uh, House Resolution Three O Seven Nine and Senate Bill Sixteen Thirty Four that basically would, uh, take control from the Northern Marianas, the current authorities of the Northern Marianas over its immigration and labor activities. On first reading, most folks might think that this is a really good thing and that the United States government should control these activities in the Northern Marianas. But if folks look at it objectively, they would see, Mr. Chairman, that this, in fact, changes the basic agreement which was entered into by the Northern Marianas and the United States government with the establishment of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas. When the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas was established, there was a covenant that was entered into between the people of the Northern Marianas and the United States government. And that government, that covenant established certain authorities for the government of the Northern Marianas. The two actions contemplated by the United States Congress in the House and the Senate, in fact, would abridge that covenant agreement without the consent of the people of the Northern Marianas. In developing this resolution, a lot of thought and effort went into how these changes would affect Guam. And, uh, the resolution requests, Mr. Speaker, that the United States Congress, through our delegates' office and the leadership of other members of Congress, require that a study be conducted to determine the impact of the federalization that is being contemplated in the Northern Marianas, not only on the Northern Marianas, but on the territory of Guam. As all of you know, there are certain provisions in the proposed federalization bills and resolutions that would make significant changes in current immigration policy of the government of the Northern Marianas that would have potential, uh, impact on Guam and may become what I'd like to characterize as an unfunded federal mandate for Guam. Today, we held our public hearing on Resolution Eighty. And I'm very pleased to report, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, we had a terrific turnout of various individuals who came and testified on the resolution. Among those who testified were the Lieutenant Governor of the Northern Marianas and four members of the legislative bodies in the Northern Marianas. And they were very supportive of this proposed resolution. It was very interesting because they characterized it as a very good beginning in opening a dialogue with our sister islands in the Marianas on issues of critical importance to our two areas, Guam and the Northern Marianas. And the Lieutenant Governor of the Northern Marianas emphasized the need for us to be united in our activities dealing with federal policy as it applies to our region of the world. Also testifying at the hearing were various members of the Guam community. All testimonies, really except for one, Mr. Chairman, was very positive in support of the resolution. I believe that we have a responsibility to stand up and let the Congress know that we have certain concerns about our contemplated federalization activities in the Northern Marianas. At the hearing, it was also brought to our attention that because the United States government entered into an agreement with the Northern Marianas in nineteen seventy-nine, and it appears to be abridging that agreement with the contemplated congressional bills being considered in the Congress, that the same thing could happen to Guam in the future as we enter into agreements with the United States government, particularly on questions of political status. And we need to be aware of that. So I asked my colleagues, and I thank my colleagues who've already signed support for this resolution. I thank them for doing so. And I encourage all our colleagues here today to support this resolution and to, uh, express our, uh, understanding and appreciation of the challenges that the people of the Northern Marianas may be facing because of these congressional bills. Unfortunately, there's been no consultation at all with Guam on these proposed congressional bills. But I do want to report to you, Mr. Chairman and Acting Speaker, that when Congresswoman Christensen came to Guam recently and brought other congressional members with her and held her hearings on Guam, I first raised the concerns of the pending federalization legislation in the Congress in terms of how it would impact not just the Northern Marianas, but Guam. And I asked her at that time, and I urged her and her colleagues then, that they need to do an appropriate impact study before they act on the federalization bills. So we have brought this to their attention in a hearing, but now we are formalizing through this resolution a more substantive statement representative of the, uh, feelings and views of the Twenty-Ninth Guam Legislature, should this become, should this pass tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz, on Resolution Number Eighty. Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the, uh, resolution, maybe from a little bit different perspective, uh, in terms of how it affects Guam. And not necessarily how it affects Guam today, but how it affects Guam tomorrow. The Northern Marianas Islands used to be part of the trust territory of the United States for all the Micronesian islands that was given under the jurisdiction and oversight of the administering power of the United States after World War Two, through the United Nations. As a transitional phase for these non-self-governing territories, uh, within the world, were basically doled out to different administering powers. Britain, all the victors, all the win, all the successful, uh, muscle, you might want to call it, after World War Two, and those that were on the part of, uh, of, of, of the United States and its allies during, after, during World War Two, basically dealt out these far-flung territories under the powers of the Security Council mem- under the jurisdiction of the Security Council members, uh, of the United Nations. And they were all tasked, of course, with helping these jurisdictions develop themselves and give rise to democracy in the different, uh, areas. Britain got its territories. Japan, I mean, not Japan, but, uh, Australia got some territories. Uh, and the other members of the Security Council basically got some territories. And the United States retained the United States' trust territories. And through the years, of course, the United States administered these jurisdictions and then continued to move these jurisdictions towards self-determination. The Northern Mariana Islands were the first of these trusteeships under the United States to invoke its self-determination process of those that were located in Micronesia. And they voted through their self-determination plebiscite to become a part of the United States and entered into negotiations with the United States of their political status. And the status they chose was to become a Commonwealth of the United States of America. And they solidified that choice in a defined relationship called a covenant between the United States of America and the people of the Northern Mariana Islands. And that covenant was signed in nineteen seventy-six, I believe, and then put into place in nineteen seventy-seven for the Northern Mariana Islands. And they became known to the world as the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands in union with the United States of America. And that covenant established the mutual relationships between the two. It outlined jurisdictions with regards to economy, the economic development of the islands, the political development of the islands, the social development of the islands, uh, and all rights and privileges that each shall enjoy in full authority and full self-government under the terms of the Commonwealth Act. And so, and, uh, and so the, or the covenant of the Northern Mariana Islands in political union with the United States of America. And in that, once that was done, of course, the other trust territories in the Pacific Islands then began their own negotiations. And the resulting negotiations, uh, ended up in us seeing independent states, basically, in political union with the United States come about in Micronesia. And that's why we have the Federated States of Micronesia, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, and the Republic of Belau in political union with the United States with full and complete internal self-government and with foreign affairs in terms of the Marshall Islands, the FSM, and the, um, and the Republic of Belau having full jurisdictions over not only internal affairs, but foreign affairs. And that's why these entities are able to have seats at the United Nations. They're able to have embassy relationships with other independent states in the world community. And the United Sta- and the CNMI instead waived its right for external, uh, self-governance. Uh, and that's why it does not have any embassies and political relationships with other independent states in the world community. But that's a choice they made. And part of the choice that would govern these individual, these two entities was what, was, um, that should there be any disagreements, should there be any changes in this political union defined in the covenant? And for all intents and purposes, the covenant is a treaty between the people of the CNMI and the people of the United States of America. And anytime any substantive change is gonna have, they go through the process of their, what is outlined in the covenant called the nine-oh-two substantive negoti- consultation process. And we see this federalization occurring without invoking the nine-oh-two substantive consultation process. And the reason why I want to kind of bring that into the picture here is because we on Guam are looking to define our political relationship with America. That when it comes our time to exercise self-determination, that the ultimate status- that the ultimate status that we choose, for me, without any question, is going to involve a political relationship between the people of Guam and the United States. And how we define that political relationship has to be based on solid history and solid commitments that both parties will honor. And so what I want to bring into this discussion also is to support that relationship that was defined between the United States of America and the covenant of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas. So, and we defend that right. And we defend and hold the United States accountable to that document because one day we will have our document and we will have a definition of our relationships. And when the United States wants to unilaterally break that, we want our neighbors to come to our defense and help us. We want the United States to show the world that it is, it will make its commitment whole not only to its allies in the, in the world community, but even greater obligation to do so to its own residents who have blessed a relationship through a definition of a political document that outlines the obligations of each. And so, Mr. Speaker, what I would like to do is amend, or propose an amendment to this in a, by adding an additional resolve clause. And the resolve clause would begin on page eight, line 14, and it would read, "Resolvemina Bintinuebinales Laturanguahan," the 29th Guam Legislature, "on behalf of the people of Guam does hereby request that the government of the United States of America address all issues of concern relative to the application of federal immigration and labor laws in the Northern Marianas Islands by initiating discussions with the government of the Northern Marianas Islands pursuant to Section 902 of the Northern Mariana Islands Covenant with the United States." And, and that, again, kind of shifts the focus to putting right before the United States what it has promised and committed to the world community, that it will honor its obligations and its treaty relationships, its covenant relationships with people of the world, in this case, the people of the Northern Marianas, that were arrived at and mutually agreed upon with free will and with, with all thought. And so I would like to present this.
Has that amendment been written down?
Yes, it's written down.
Okay, so, okay. But with that, if it's been written, if there's no objection to the amendment, so, okay, so moved, so ordered. Senator Pangolinen, anything else? Okay, thank you very much Senator Pangolinen. Again, on the main Resolution Number 80, as amended, there's no other comments? Sen- oh, uh... Technical? Okay. Can you get to the microphone there, Senator?
After the word "because" on line 18, please remove the word "of," O-F, "of."
Okay.
Line 18, after the word "because," remove the word "of." That's a technical error.
Okay, and there's no objection? Okay, so moved, so ordered. Okay, again, on the main amendment, Senator, I, I don't think you, you want to close on it, or? Okay, so, can the motion to place into the voting file, third reading, if there's no objection? Okay, so ordered. We have dispensed of all matters, oh, Senator Luhan? Okay, so we are now in the second reading. You'd like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to motion, Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the governor's veto message.
Oh, I think you had a motion to go back to motions.
Motion, move back to motions, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, if there's no objection? Okay, so ordered, or motion, Senator Luhan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, not the governor's veto message on Bill Number 61, I'd like to place veto Bill Number 61 on the voting file for reasons of, of an order.
Okay, if there's no objection? Okay, so ordered. Okay, we've dispensed in all matters on the second reading. And with that, I'm going to call a few minutes recessed. We are now in the third reading, voting file. And with that, we have first Bill Number 39 EC as amended.
Bill Number 39 EC as amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank T. Shizaki, A.D., Palacios Senior, Frank F., Blas Junior, and others. An act to add a new section, 1903.2, Chapter 19 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, to add a new section, 301.01.1 of the Chapter 30 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new section, 401.03.1 to Chapter 40 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the procession of a newly-elected public auditor, Attorney General, and village mayor respectively.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Shijaki? Senator Luhan? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pangolinen? Senator Rispichu? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampet?
The votes on Bill 39 are 12 yays, zero nays, and three absences. Bill 39 EC as amended on the floor has been duly passed by Satur Guan. Bill Number 41 EC as amended?
Bill Number 41 EC as amended on the floor.
Mr. Speaker, just to, to note on Bill 41, on line 24, page 4, that should read "hours" instead of "hour." Additional hours on weekends.
Additional, okay, thank you. Okay, for a technical amendment. Duly noted, okay, we'll have legal counsel correct the correction. Thank you very much, Senator.
Mr. Speaker, also just a technicality, you know, the bottom of page one, that continue, the sentence that continues all the way to page two really doesn't make much sense. Just seems to be, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but it doesn't seem to have any continuity and as a experienced difficulty addition persons with abilities and elderly often read it. So it's just, you know, just port of information.
Duly noted. Bill 41 EC?
Bill Number 41 EC as amended on the floor, introduced by A.D. Palacios Senior, Frank F., Blas Junior, Edward J.B., Calvo, and others. An act relative to increasing voter participation through allowing for early voting by the people of Guam and further requiring the sufficient public notification be provided in each election on the availability of such services through adding a new section, 10, 1, 2, 9 to Chapter 10, Title 3, Guam Code Annotated.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo? Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Shijaki? Senator Luhan? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pangolinen? Senator Rispichu? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampet?
Bill 40, the vote on Bill 41 EC is amended are 12 yays, zero nays, and three absences. Bill 41 has been duly passed by Satur Guan. Bill Number 78 as substituted by the committee?
Bill Number 78 LS as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice, and Youth, and amended. Introduced by A.R. Ompinko, V.C. Pangolinen, Frank F., Blas Junior, and others. An act to add a new section, 3347 to Article 3 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to reading, writing, or sending electronic messages while operating a moving motor vehicle prescribing penalties and providing an effective aid.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
Pass.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Shijaki? Senator Luhan? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pangolinen? Senator Rispichu? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampet? Speaker Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Luhan? Senator Luhan?
The vote on Bill, on substitute Bill 78 are 12 yays, zero nays, three absences. Substitute Bill 78 has duly passed by Satur Guan.
Bill?
Bill Number 92 LS as amended?
Bill Number 92 LS as amended?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion that 92 be, be placed in the inactive file because it was a part of the budget.
Okay, and if there's no objection, so ordered. Bill Number 102 LS as amended?
Bill Number 102 as amended. Introduced by Ray Tenorio, Frank T. Shizaki, A.D., Palacios Senior, and others. An act to add a new section, 80127, to Chapter 80, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to reserving the Haganya Library parking lot for exclusive use by library employees and patrons.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Shijaki? Senator Luhan? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pangolinen? Senator Rispichu? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampet? Senator Blas? Senator Spaldon? Senator Blas? Senator Spaldon?
This was quite a controversial bill. The vote on Bill 1, the vote on Bill 102 LS as amended is 11 yays, 1 nay, 3 absences. Bill 102 has been duly passed by Satur Guan. Bill Number 130 as amended?
Bill Number 130 EC as amended by the Committee on Judiciary, Natural Resources, Infrastructure, and Cultural Affairs. Introduced by James V. Spaldon, Frank F., Blas Junior, Edward J.B., Calvo, and others. An act to repeal and reenact Chapter 50 of Title 10 of the Guam Code Annotated relative to the Guam pesticides.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Shijaki? Senator Luhan? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pangolinen? Senator Rispichu? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampet? Senator Wampat.
Are you gonna use your whole two minutes there, Senator?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, soft spoken, I'm sorry.
Very soft. Very soft.
The votes on Bill one thirty is amended are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Uh, Bill one thirty, E C, is amended, has been passed duly passed by Saturaguan. On substit-, on substitute Bill number thirty-three?
Bill number thirty-three, E C, as substituted by the author, amended on the floor. Introduced by R. J. Raspiciu, Judith Palette Guthard, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, and others. An act to add a new chapter, twenty-three to Title One, Guam Code annotated, relative to creating commission Guam. The Guam First Commission and the Military Mission in Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Boss.
Okay, the votes on Bill thirty-three, E C, are eleven yays, one nay, and three absences. Uh, Bill number thirty-three is substituted, has been duly passed by Saturaguan. Bill number forty-nine, E C?
Bill number forty-nine, E C, is amended, introduced by R. J. Raspiciu, Judith Palette Guthard, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, and others. An act to prohibit the use of electronic voting machines by adding a new subitem to Section Two One Zero Three of Chapter Two, and adding a new Chapter Seven One Zero Three Point One to Chapter Seven, all of Title Three, Guam Code annotated.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
On Bill forty-nine, E C, as amended, there are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Bill forty-nine, E C, as amended, has been duly passed by Saturaguan. Substitute Bill one oh nine, E C?
Bill number one zero nine, E C, as substituted by the Committee on Education, General, and Omnibus Affairs, and amended. Introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, J. T. Wampat, Judith Palette Guthard, and others. An act amend Section Three One Zero Eight of Chapter Three, Division One, Title Nineteen. Guam Code annotated relative to the hibernation of surnames upon marriage.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
For continuation of the Bossa Calvo name, yes.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes.
Bill, Mr. Speaker, I just want to note that there may be a technical change that's needed in page two ni-, line nine.
Page two, line nine? Oh. Yeah, these are, those are technical in nature, we'll have them corrected by legal counsel.
My vote is yes.
Duly noted, and tho- those corrections will be.
Okay.
Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
Yay, on substitute Bill one oh nine, there are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Substitute Bill one oh nine, E C, has been duly passed by Saturaguan. Bill number one thirty-nine?
Bill number one thirty-nine, E C, as amended by the author. Introduced by V. C. Pangolinan, David L. G. Shimizu, J. T. Wampat, and others. An act to amend Section Six of Public Law Twenty Dash One Eight Nine and Section Four of Public Law Twenty Dash One Three Three relative to applying uniform conditions for substitutions.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Boss.
The vote on Bill one thirty-nine, E C, is amended are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Bill one thirty-nine, E C, has been duly passed by Saturaguan. Bill one oh six?
Bill number one oh six, E C, is amended, introduced by A. B. Palacios Senior, Frank F. Blood Junior, Edward J. B. Calvo, and others. An act amend Section Seven Nine One Oh Five of Chapter Seventy-Nine, Title Twelve, Guam Code annotated, relative to filling vacancies and validating commission on utilities.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Bill one oh six, E C, are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Bill one oh six, E C, has been duly passed by Saturaguan. On Bill num-, uh, on s-, on Bill one one six is substituted?
Bill number one one six, E C, as substituted by the Committee on Education, General, and Omnibus Affairs, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith Palette Guthard, Frank F. Blood Junior, Edward J. B. Calvo, and others. An act amend Section Three One Zero Three B of Chapter Three of Title Seventeen, Guam Code annotated, relative to the Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent of Education.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Boss. Senator Raspiciu.
The vo-, vote on substitute Bill one, one sixteen are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Substitute Bill one sixteen has been duly passed by Saturaguan. On substitute Bill one thirty-two, E C?
Bill number one thirty-two, E C, as substituted by the Committee on Education, General, and Omnibus Affairs, and as amended. Introduced by Judith Palette Guthard, R. J. Raspiciu, and others. An act amend Title Twenty-One, G. C., in Section Eight Zero One Oh Four E, relative to the powers and duties of the Ancestral Lands Commission to manage and develop former Spanish Crown lands and other non-ancestral lands.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Speaker Calvo.
No.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Lohan. Senator Tenorio. Senator Lohan. Senator Tenorio.
The votes on Bill one thirty-two, E C, are eight yays, four nays, and three absences. Bill one thirty-two has been duly passed by Saturaguan. Bill number one twenty?
Bill number one twenty, E C, as amended by the author. Introduced by Edward J. B. Calvo, Frank B., Frank F. Boss Junior, James V. Spaldon, and others. An act to resume Law Number Two One Four Nine Dash Four Dash Seven New from multiple family residential, R. Two to commercial, C. Zone.
Roll call.
Senator Boss. Yes. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthard. Senator Shujaki. Senator Lohan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Raspiciu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Senator Shimizu.
The votes on Bill one twenty EC are seven yays, five nays, and three absences. Bill one twenty EC has, um, has failed. Bill one fifteen EC is substituted.
Bill number one fifteen EC is substituted by the Committee on Education, General and Omnibus Affairs, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith Palette Guthard, Guthard, Frank F. Blood Junior, Edward J.B. Calvo and others. An act to make the following amendments to chapter three of title seventeen Guam Code annotated or relative to the Guam Public School System. Section three one zero eight is amended relative to an attorney for the Guam Education Policy Board. Section three one 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 is amended relative to board elections. Section three one one five is amended relative to terms of office of board members. Section three one one seven A is amended relative to vacancies on the board. And section three one one nine is amended relative to the board chairman. And a new section three one one one, one point one is added relative to staggered elections for board members.
Roll call.
Senator Blas. Speaker Calvo.
Pass.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Ford. Senator Guthard. Senator Sajaki. Senator Lohann. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Penilinen. Senator Rispishu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Wampat. Senator Blas. Speaker Calvo.
Pass.
Senator Spaldon. Sorry. Did you say yes? Senator Lohann. Senator Blas. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
The votes on Bill one fifteen are eleven yays, one nay, and three absences. Bill one fifteen has been duly passed by the Saturaguan. On substitute Bill one oh five?
Bill number one zero five EC is substituted by co- by committee and general government operations and reorganization and amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank D. Sajaki, J.T. Wampat, Ray Tenorio and others. An act amend chapter eighty-nine of title nine of the Guam Code annotated relative to the administration of the Guam Sex Offender Registry and requiring all those convicted of criminal sexual conduct or of a crime against a victim who is a minor to register in the Sex Offender Registry and to strengthen the Guam Sex Offender Registration and Notification Program requirements.
Roll call.
Senator Blas. Speaker Calvo.
Pass.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Ford. Senator Guthard. Senator Sajaki. Senator Lohann. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Penilinen. Senator Rispishu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Blas. Speaker Calvo.
Aye.
Senator Spaldon. Senator Lohann. Senator Shimizu.
The votes on Bill one oh five EC are twelve yays, zero nays, and three absences. Bill one oh five C EC has been duly passed by the Saturaguan. Bill number sixty-five is substituted.
Bill number sixty-five EC is substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, Commerce and Economic Development, and amended on the floor. Introduced by A.B. Palacios Senior, Frank F. Blood Junior, Edward J.B. Calvo, James and others. An act enhance the enforcement powers of the Department for Permanent Taxation regarding the sale of alcoholic beverages by business establishments by adding a new section three one two two to chapter three article one title eleven Guam Code annotated.
Roll call.
Senator Blas. Speaker Calvo.
No.
Senator Spaldon. Speaker Ford. Senator Guthard. Senator Sajaki. Senator Lohann. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Speaker Penilinen. Senator Rispishu. Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Spaldon. Senator Lohann. Senator Tenorio.
Uh, you know, throughout the discussions of the proceedings, I've always understood this bill and I, I, I supported it. However, the language in, in this version, again, causes me to pause. And, and that's the only reason why I am pausing. So, I, I, and I'm not sure whether it was in the original version or if this is a typographical error or a technical error. And that's, that's the reason why I paused, to cast a vote. And that's because on page two, on lines, uh, when you start, uh, starting at lines twenty-three, basically it says that "On sale licensee shall not sell after two AM." However, except that on New Year's Eve, the selling time shall be at two AM. And, and, and on Saturdays and Sundays, the selling time shall be at four AM. So that tells me is that on most days you can't sell after two AM, but on these days, you start selling at two AM and four AM. A- and so, it causes me to pause to see, to, to figure out whether that was really...
I, I'm so- Senator, we're in the voting file.
I, I understand.
I'm supr- I'm disappointed to hear that, but... That is, as is the bill, and we are voting on the bill, Senator. The bi- the bill has been corrected and that it is been a gross no debate. So again, it is, it's a yea or a nay. Or a pass. The votes on Bill sixty-five EC are ten yays, two nays, and three absences. Bill sixty-five EC has been duly passed by Saturaguan. Bill thirty-two?
Bill number thirty-two EC is amended on the floor, introduced by A.B. Palacios Senior, David L.G. Shimizu, Frank F. Blood Junior and others. An act relative to memorializing the memory of one of Guam's youth from the village of Telefoco and further highlighting the community's fight against youth and school violence. Talfofo and further highlighting the community's fight against youth and school violence through naming the Talfofo Community Youth Center, the Jeremy Paul Nui Community and Youth Center at the request of the mayor and several residents of the southern village of Talfofo.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Cowell?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthard? Senator Shuakaki? Senator Luhon? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pengelinen? Senator Risposito? Senator Shimizu?
The vote on Bill number thirty-two E C are twelve yeas, zero nays, and three absences. Bill thirty-two has been duly passed by Satora Guan. Resolution number sixty-eight?
Resolution number sixty-eight E C is amended by the act and further amended on the floor. Introduced by A. B. Palacios Senior, B. C. Pengelinen, Frank E. Blood Junior, and others relative to requesting the United States government to extend the application and coverage of Medicare entitlements to eligible Guam recipients who have earned these Medicare benefits and will choose to obtain quality health and medical care services in the Philippines.
Roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Cowell?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthard? Senator Shuakaki? Senator Luhon? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pengelinen? Senator Risposito? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampat?
The votes on resolution number sixty-eight are twelve yeas, zero nays, and three absences. Resolution sixty-eight has been duly passed by Satora Guan. Resolution number eighty?
Resolution number eighty L S is amended on the floor introduced by Judith Paulette Guthard, J. T. Wampat, Rory, J. R. Risposito, and others. Validating our expressing opposition to and caution and concern regarding the passage of H R three zero seven nine, the Northern Mariana Islands Immigration, Security, and Labor Act. As introduced in S B sixteen thirty-four, the Northern Mariana Islands Covenant Implementation Act to the United States Congress suggesting that Guam's government, that Guam's delegate to Congress requests the U. S. Government Accountability Office conduct a report on the expected impact that passes of H R three zero seven nine and S B sixteen thirty-four will cause in Guam and the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, and requesting that the United States Mission to the United Nations advise the United Nations Committee on Decolonization of the Expressions of the People of Guam contained herein.
Roll call.
Senator Frank Blas? Speaker Cowell?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthard? Senator Shuakaki? Senator Luhon? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pengelinen? Senator Risposito? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampat?
The vote on resolution number eighty L S are twelve yeas, zero nays, and three absences. Resolution number eighty has been duly passed by Satora Guan. Notwithstanding objections of Ima. Ghulain Guan on the matter of vetoed Bill number sixty-one, and should the legislature override the governor's veto on Bill number sixty-one E C, roll call.
Senator Blas? Speaker Cowell?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon? Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthard? Senator Shuakaki? Senator Luhon? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Pengelinen? Senator Risposito? Senator Shimizu? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Ompinko? Senator Wampat?
Okay, on vetoed Bill sixty-one E C and notwithstanding the objections of the governor's veto, there are ten yeas, two nays, three absences. Again, notwithstanding the objections of the governor's veto, veto Bill sixty-one E C has been overridden by Satora Guan. We have finished things? Senator Tenorio?
Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
Okay, with that, we have... This is... Oh, we need a motion for Senator Ompinko? Do we, he's been duly excused, okay. Okay. Okay, so, subject to the sc- call, call of the speaker, so ordered?